Thank you for joining us for the City Council Study Session for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for July 16, 2018. We will begin our meeting with citizen comment on any agenda items, and I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak from the public? Seeing none, we will go on to our first order of business. This is item number one, a presentation from Let's Go Colorado Transportation Funding Campaign. And Rachel Zenzinger, would you please and your associate join us at the table? And we're happy to have you here. And I will let you turn on your mic and introduce yourself and let us have a presentation.
Pull it closer. There you go. There you go. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Again, my name is Rachel Zenzinger. I'm a state senator and I represent Senate District 19, which is the Arvada and Westminster area here of Jefferson County, and a former Arvada City Councilwoman. So I was sitting back here fondly remembering my city council days. And so I am here to represent as an ambassador of the Let's Go Colorado campaign. I am a volunteer with the campaign, and I just want to make it very clear that our presentation today is actually on behalf of the campaign. This is not a legislative proposal. This is not something that came out of the legislature. This is a private citizen initiative that is moving forward, and it's an opportunity just to share with you a little bit of the background about what's motivating the campaign and a little bit about the initiative and to answer some questions that you may have. So you should have in your council packets a copy of our presentation, and so I'll just start with our first slide here. Again, as I said, this is part of the Let's Go Colorado Coalition, and this is a coalition that's been working together in some form or another for at least the last five years. On the next.
Remote there, too.
Great.
Power through those.
Thank you. So where it all started, the primary in-state revenue source for our roads has been the same since 1991, and that is a 22 cent per gallon gas tax. I get this question a lot down at the state legislature, which is, you know, why can't you just, you know, put more into roads? Well, actually, we have one dedicated revenue source that goes towards transportation, and that's the gas tax. Unfortunately, that gas tax has not changed since 1991, but Colorado has changed significantly since 1991. Now, I'm going to date myself a little bit here, but back in 1991, I was celebrating the end of my freshman year of high school, and this summer I will be returning back to my 20th college reunion. So a lot has changed since 1991. Unfortunately, we haven't updated the way that we fund our transportation, however. We've only applied Band-Aids along the way, and we believe that if we're ever going to address congestion, poor infrastructure, and safety on our roads, we have to find a new way to fund transportation. Back in 1991, our 22 cents that is set aside for our gas tax, but since then, in Colorado, we have, well, back in 1991, we had approximately 3 million people that were living here. Coloradans drove a combined 28 billion miles, and we spent approximately $126 per driver back in 1991. However, whereas we had a dollar purchasing power back in 1991, we have approximately 54 cents today in 2018. When we look at everything that we spend money on, we basically get half of what we used to get in 1991 for a single gas tax dollar. So what does that mean? Here are some standard market items and what they cost in 1991. If you look at the price of a car, for example, the price of a car has increased by 76 percent. Road resurfacing has increased by 120 percent, and a gallon of gas has increased by approximately 140 percent. If you are a Sesame Street fan, as I was once upon a time and, you know, when I had my young kids, one of these things is not like the others. One of these things does not belong. And one of those things that is not like the others is the gas tax, which has remained the same, and which I've already mentioned was 22 cents per gallon. Not only that, but I arrived here today in a lovely Prius hybrid. I don't know how many of you also have a hybrid, but the second reason why the gas tax is fading away is that we have had some pretty good technology and increased fuel efficiency among our vehicles. So we get almost 18 percent more fuel efficiency out of our cars today than we did in 1991. That's 18 percent less than that is going to fund our transportation here in the state. And so looking down the road, we do have a lot to be concerned about, particular advances in electric vehicles. It's the fastest-growing market. We had a couple of different bills down at the state Capitol this year talking about electric vehicles and how it is that we might look at the electric vehicles paying their fair share because it's not going into the gasoline taxes it once was. We have hybrids and then also just further increased fuel efficiency vehicles. And then the last piece of this equation is that Colorado's population has grown. I don't have to tell you that in our last 50 years, our population has grown by 164 percent, or approximately 3.5 million people. That's a lot of people. Meanwhile, our miles in Colorado, miles of highways, have only increased by 17 percent. So 17 percent compared to 164 percent growth. So that's part of the reason why here in the metro area, we're experiencing so much So if you put this all together, when we combine all of these factors, we're in a pretty tough spot. There are a lot more people, our cars are more efficient, and the 22 cents per gallon from the gas tax is worth less and less. So today, we spend approximately $69 per driver in Colorado. And remember on the earlier slide, we were spending $126. So it's about half of what we spent in 1991. In addition to that, we have approximately $9 billion worth of need at the state level. And here's the real shocker. I didn't even know this statistic until the campaign came and presented at the Denver Metro Chamber State of the State address. 88 percent of our lane miles here in Colorado are actually local, not state. So 88 percent of our lane miles are under local jurisdictions and are in need of funding as well. So the coalition that is working to put this initiative on the ballot is a statewide coalition of organizations that are advocating for a sales tax to increase transportation revenue. They are from all four corners of the state, and they represent business interests, community organizations, governmental agencies, Republicans, Democrats alike. There's quite a comprehensive list of coalition partners. This is just a sampling of them. Everything from the Metro Mayor's Caucus to Conservation Colorado, all the way out to Club 20 in Grand Junction and a number of other organizations, Action 22, for example. So a lot of people want to know, how did you land on sales tax? Why did you come up with that idea when there are clearly other ideas out there about how we might look at funding transportation? Well, the coalition did look at a number of revenue options, and then when trying to find a solution, we literally have left no stone unturned. We don't want to put our time, effort, money, resources behind a failing initiative. We wanted to make sure that it was the right one, that all members of the coalition could get behind. So we looked at, for example, vehicle registration fees. We looked at income tax. We looked at multiple sources. We looked at the fuel tax. A lot of people have said, well, you know, if we haven't increased the gas tax since 1991, just increase the gas tax. We also looked at a number of different methods of trying to get more money, to squeeze more money out of the state budget, including the general fund, which we did do, but to the maximum capacity that we can. And so all pretty much, when we looked at all of these different ideas and we polled them, we tested them, we went out to voters, we said, what would you be willing to do? Our reaction to the fuel tax, for example, is that because we have not increased it for so long, that we would literally have to increase it, we'd have to more than double it in order to make any kind of a significant impact, and it wouldn't even begin to address the needs that we have in the state. And it goes beyond the threshold of what people are willing to pay. So if we were to put a gas tax on the ballot, people would not be willing to vote for it because it would be too much. It's also not a very good long-term solution because of some of the other factors that I mentioned earlier regarding fuel efficiency. It's a diminishing tax source. Secondly, vehicle registration. Well, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending how you're looking at it, Colorado already has among the highest vehicle registration costs in the country, and it doesn't raise enough on its own, and it also doesn't include other people who come to our state, such as tourists, that also participate on our roadways and our transportation system. Not only that, it's also very difficult for people if we were to raise those vehicle registration fees. You kind of get hit all at once, and so whenever you go to renew your tags, you know, you'd be looking at a significant amount of money coming out of your budget. Not everybody can do that, as opposed to something that is incremental over time. We did look at the general fund. There are some other proposals that are out there that are proposing the general fund, but just as someone who works with the state budget, this does kick the can down the road for a couple of different reasons. Right now, the general fund doesn't go to transportation. It goes to other priorities that we have in the state, higher ed, education, healthcare, so on, which means that we would then have to stop giving those general fund dollars to those priorities and divert them. So it's essentially a cut in resources for some of our other departments, but let's say we think that it's important enough that we want to do it. It's not a reliable source of revenue year after year, which is another issue that we have with it. The general fund goes up and down based on how well we do in the economy, and we have some legitimate competing priorities. Education, for example, we have an $850 million negative factor, and this would do nothing in order to allow us to be able to reset that back to zero. We also think that it's pretty dangerous to be putting spending on autopilot and obligating future Coloradans to debt repayment without some sort of a revenue source. So in looking at all of our different options that we explored, we really landed on the sales tax because of the deficiencies of these other areas, but then also the sales tax is something that most voters that we polled said that they'd be willing to do. So sales tax, it will raise enough in order for us to address the problem. It's a small amount that adds up over time, and it helps everyone pay the same rate, including tourists, which we think is pretty important when you think about the I-70 corridor, the people that are coming into our state to go ski up in the mountains, and the amount of congestion that that has brought to the Front Range area, and so on. So how much of the tax are we talking about? We are looking at a 0.62 percent sales tax increase. This is approximately 6 cents on a $10 purchase, and it would raise approximately $767 million in the first year. The bonding capacity for CDOT from this revenue is approximately $6 billion, and this initiative would sunset in 20 years. One of the interesting elements about this particular proposal is the fact that it's not just going to the state. We do have, like I said, $9 billion worth of need for the state, but 88 percent of our lane miles are local. And so it's really important to recognize that if we're going to move forward with a statewide tax, it better darn well improve our statewide system. And so the way that the formula will be cut up is, first of all, 45 percent of it will go to CDOT for large bonding projects across the state. 40 percent of it, split evenly, 2020, will go to cities and counties, and then 15 percent of it will go to our multimodal options fund. This is a new transportation fund within the state. The even split between the cities and counties was really important for the cities. The Metro Mayor's Caucus really discussed this at length, in particular because if you're going to use sales tax as your revenue generation, that potentially competes with your own revenue generation. And so it was really critical to the Metro Mayors that there not be a disproportionate amount, you know, very similar to the HUTF where counties get a little bit more. This is split evenly between counties and cities. So let's drill down a little bit more specific. What kinds of projects, for example, would affect Wheat Ridge on a daily basis? You see before you in your packet a list of just a couple of the state projects that do impact the Wheat Ridge area. I'm very familiar with the I-70 Kipling Interchange, as it's one of those critical interchanges between our two communities. I remember talking about it when I was on City Council. It will allow us to address CDOT Strategic Priority Investment Program, and we'll be able to use this money in order to bond against the new revenue source immediately so that we can start addressing some of these critical projects. But as I stated, the formula is not just, it's not just going to the state. Wheat Ridge will be getting a significant amount of this new tax revenue as well so that you can look toward funding your local projects. So in the first year, we believe that Wheat Ridge will receive $1.184 million, and approximately $33 million over the 20 years. The fund will grow, and so this money, in addition to that, that we predict that Jefferson County will get approximately $10 million of it. And this is money that will come to you immediately through the HUTF formula, but with an even In addition to this, this just kind of shows you some of the potential local projects that you could use your money for, and by the way, the state doesn't determine what you get to use your money for. You get determined what you want to use your money for. You could use it for street repaving, potholes, you could use it for lane widening, shoulders, bridge repairs, sidewalks, whatever is a priority for you community, your community, you get to decide. The state is not going to come in and tell you this is what you have to use your money for. You get to decide. So as part of that formula, you saw earlier that 45 percent is going to the state, 20 percent to the cities, 20 percent to the counties, and there was 15 percent that's going to this thing called the Multimodal Transportation Options Fund. Well, what is that? This is a fund. Currently, there's approximately $10 million in the state annually that goes into the multimodal fund in the state, but we're going to be actually transforming that multimodal fund in order to open it up for local municipalities to have access to it. So the new revenue that would go into this fund will allow you to leverage state and local dollars for projects, to look at multimodal projects across the state, and looking at issues in particular of those interregional transit projects such as bus staying. But most of this money is going to be opened up to the local municipalities through the way of matching grants in order to make your transit and your multimodal projects go a little bit further. So last slide here, just adding it all up. We believe that this initiative will help create a reliable revenue stream to support and complete our state transportation projects, but it's also going to help prioritize rural and urban multimodal mobility, and it's going to allocate funding to local communities across the state and actually give you the authority to make some transportation decisions as well. This particular initiative is pretty similar to House Bill 1242 that was pitched back in 2017, in which really truly the entire state came forward and endorsed and asked us to move forward with it. Ultimately, that bill was not successful, and as I stated when I first started the presentation, this is not a legislative proposal because it was not successful. So this is not an initiative that's being referred by the legislature. What the legislature did this year is we did pass Senate Bill 1. Senate Bill 1 basically says that we had some additional one-time revenue funds that we dedicated to transportation. It's approximately $500 million. Next year, we'll dedicate approximately $150 million, and thereafter, the state legislature from the general fund will be dedicating $50 million to transportation. We really, it's significant. I mean, that's a pretty long-term commitment on the part of the state because we recognize that we have to do something in order to work on our infrastructure here in the state. But without a new revenue source, that'll be it. That's the most that we can possibly do, and when you have $9 billion worth of need, we don't think that the $50 million from the general fund is going to go very far. Again, I'm a volunteer with the coalition, but I can entertain any questions that you might have, and I can, I'd like to introduce Jake here. Jake Martin is the manager of the campaign, and so he probably can answer more specific questions if he has any that I'm unable to address.
Well, thank you very much, Senator. We appreciate that presentation. Do we have some questions from council? Ms. Dozeman.
So Senate Bill 1 was originally $3 billion proposed out of the general fund towards transportation, right?
No.
How much was it originally?
So Senate Bill 1 as the first draft?
Yes.
That made it out of the?
Made it out of the Senate.
The Senate, well, no. So the original Senate Bill 1 that came out of the Senate was my amendment. So it was approximately $250 million.
That's all?
Yes.
Okay.
So the $250 million can get you approximately $3.5 billion in bonding capacity, which is probably where that number came from, if that sounds familiar. Back in 2017, Senate Bill 267, which was the reclassification of the hospital provider fee, also known as the Sustainability of Rural Colorado, when they reclassified the hospital provider fee, that fee was no, will no longer be counted as revenue against our taper cap. And because of that, we were able to have approximately, I don't know how much it was, $400 million or so that would no longer be counted against our revenue cap, that we could then decide what we wanted to prioritize with. And what they did under the banner of the Sustainability of Rural Colorado is transportation got approximately $150 million, $100 million from the general fund, $50 million from CDOT, and through the issuance of COPs, by selling off our state assets essentially, to use that in order to potentially bond up to $1.9 billion. And so that was a bill that passed in 2017, and that $1.9 billion potential bonding capacity would be broken up into four payments, with the first payment going out here this July, the first tranction of approximately $350 million. When we passed Senate Bill 1 this year, we said, we don't want to stop. We don't want to slow down progress. So we want to go ahead and let that first tranction of money, the $350 million, to go out this summer as planned. We will hold off in doing any kind of going to the voters and asking for, to take out bonding until 2019 because we knew that there were going to be a couple of different proposals that were going to be heading to the ballot, and we didn't want to compete against those initiatives because then everybody would fail. And so then we said, let's hold off. Let's see what happens. Pending what happens, there are three triggers in Senate Bill 1. So the first trigger is, let's say, this initiative, Let's Go Colorado, the 0.62 percent sales tax, let's say it passes, then everything that was laid out in Senate Bill 267 for transportation will go away, except for that first tranction that already happened because we will have a new revenue source and we'll be able to take all of those projects that we committed to in 267, and we'll be able to do them through this initiative. If this does not pass, then in 2019, the state will go to the voters. The final version of Senate Bill 1 was approximately $150 million from the general fund, and we will ask the voters if we can bond off of that $150 million from the general fund, which would produce approximately $2.62 billion worth of projects. None of that money would go to the locals, however. That is just state funds for the state system. And we would have to carry over the $1.9 billion in commitment that we made in 267, and so if we went to the voters in 2019 to ask for these bonds, it would, like I said, it would get us to approximately 2.65, 3.5, I'm sorry, 2.35 billion in bonding capacity. So, and then the last thing that could potentially happen is that if this doesn't pass, if our bond initiative in 2019 doesn't pass, if nothing passes, then we have made a $50 million commitment from the general fund for 20 years, and that's all that will happen. And what the commitment from 267, the COPs, the approximately $1.9 billion in COPs will move forward as planned. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? Ms. Matthews.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. Has anybody run the numbers on CDOT themselves and their efficiency ratings 1991 versus currently? What's, how has their fixed overhead increased over the years compared to inflation?
Yes, and their efficiency has actually, I'm on the CDOT Accountability and Efficiency Committee. Committee, so I'm actually the representative to that committee. And so their overhead has actually decreased.
Per lane mile or based on what?
It's not based on per mile because of the way that CDOT is, receives their revenue. We get a large chunk of revenue from the federal government, and then from the gas tax, and then other vehicle registration fees, for example, from the faster bill.
But...
As a department and as the revenue that goes to them, they're operating on...
Overhead per mile of road that they oversee, has their efficiency increased?
Their efficiency, yes, their efficiency has...
Not their revenues. They're actually over dollars per lane mile.
Their efficiency has increased. The amount of overhead has decreased.
Okay. I noticed here you've got your numbers based on populations and 164% population, but your figures are based on drivers. Why the diff, why not a direct correlation there? Why apples and oranges? Because not all of that population growth is drivers.
Sure. I think it was strictly just the data availability, but we can dig into that a little bit more and get an answer on that.
Well, how did you arrive at the number of increase in drivers then?
We received those figures from the state, from CDOT.
Current gas tax and license fees, how much of that money actually goes to building roads and how much of it goes to other expenditures, such as RTD and other projects?
RTD is not part of CDOT. So we don't, we don't...
RTD told me they get CDOT money.
No. They can apply for grants for projects in which there is, you know, local or state or RTD overlap, but...
I was just at a meeting in Arvada a week ago, and they say they get some of their money from CDOT, from the, either from their license fees.
Not from the license fees, no.
Not from gas tax?
How much of the HUTF actually goes towards the?
For transit, 10%.
So the state has 10% of the state transportation budget goes to multimodal options.
Basically.
So that, and it's $10 million is what it is. Actually, I take that back. 10% is what was passed in Senate Bill 267. It is not 10% of the CDOT budget. I just misquoted myself. The 10% is the amount of money that in 267 that they wanted to dedicate to transit, but the actual transit number from CDOT is $10 million. It's not 10%, it's 10 million.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Duran.
Yes. I wanted to ask how you came up with the percentage breakdown, like between municipalities?
Oh, yeah. So there was a, that, those figures really came from the coalition themselves. I do know that Metro mayors and Dr. Cog played a big part in making sure that there was parity between the counties and the cities. But Jake can actually go into more detail about how they landed on those particular figures.
So the dollars that go to city by city, county by county, that's all based on the current HUTF distribution. So it varies a little bit by city and county, where they calculate it a little bit differently. But the variables in it are lane miles, vehicle registration, figures by city. So it's following the same structure that's been there, I think for 25 years at this point.
Were you asking someone about the, just the 40%?
Yeah.
The 40%, 45%?
Forty-five, 20, 20, 15.
Yeah. The whole breakdown.
Oh, the whole breakdown of the penny. Got, sorry, there's another layer of distribution.
I decided to do 50%.
Yeah. So I think the 45% for CDOT was enough to pay for a significant portion of the project list that they have at hand, including some of the other dollars that exist from the state, that they could really get a lot done with that 45%. Then the 20% for cities, 20% for counties, I think Senator Zenzinger touched on, is it's a little bit differently than the distribution is now, where it's 18 and 22 right now. So we wanted to find that parity between cities and counties so that it could make up for that, for being a sales tax. That last 15% is the multimodal fund, which is new. And we currently, for state dollars, there's a portion that needs to go to transit, but we wanted to make sure that we had a, you know, at least 15% going to transit. So it's just, I think, a lot of negotiations between the coalition, trying to find consensus, and this is the formula that they settled with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pond.
Thank you. One question was answered, I think, and I'll, I can research more later on how the estimate for Wheat Ridge was based, but there is an algorithm that you have indicated, so that's fine. But of that 1.1 million, I guess what I'm a little bit confused about, is that, is that just the kind of, you know, projection based on, based on the waiting for us of earned income to that 0.62? However, I thought you are bonding, are you bonding against the sales tax? And if so, as you bond or do other things, it seems like the municipalities aren't necessarily benefiting from the bonding capacity. It sounds like we're getting a kind of the year's revenues in arrears or in advance? I guess that's a question. And then, and then someone perhaps is benefiting from bonding capacity, but it doesn't seem like it's us. Am I misinterpreting that?
So the state can't address its Tier 1 list of priorities unless it uses the revenue for bonding. So yes, the new revenue that is going to the state portion, we will be using for approximately $6 billion worth of bonding capacity. Of course, that's over 20 years. And it's a more reliable fund, quite frankly, a more reliable revenue source than COPs. You know, we had to kick in $150 million in order to make those COPs work because you don't know when and if you're going to be able to sell your state assets to be able to use that for the COPs. Some municipalities might end up with a figure that is enough for them to be able to say, with matching city dollars, we're going to go out and bond for a particular project, but that would be up to you. Nobody would be telling you that, you know, you have to do that with your money. It's what you want to do.
Well, that's encouraging, I suppose, to the extent that there is an anticipated surety to the revenues that we'll be getting.
I think that's, that's part of the, part of the benefit or part of the attraction of this proposal is that you have a dedicated revenue source that you could bond against. And whether you, you know, when you look at the local, the local share and the county share, you know, in our local share, we might look at projects like, you know, 38th Avenue, Kipling to, Kipling to Young Field, and doing, you know, curb gutter and sidewalk and storm sewer. That's, that's a local project, and this would, this would provide a means of funding for that. And whether we decided to accelerate it and, and use that as a bonded project, this would be a form of repayment for that.
And the I-70 Kipling project potentially could come out of the state bond.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's in the Tier 1 project, and it's, it's pretty high up there. I have had a couple of people say, well, how do we know what the state's going to do with the money? So as in, T-Rex is a good example. Before going to the ballot, there will be in the blue book a list of priority projects. Those priority projects will be determined by a couple of different ways. We have the Tier 1 project list that's been vetted by all of the COGS in the state, all the different transportation planning organizations, as well as the Transportation Commission. Do you have, when they're meeting, there's a Transportation Commission meeting on this Thursday, actually, where they will actually be winnowing down a list of priority projects. These projects will not be ranked. There'll just be a list of priority projects because there are a lot of different factors that go into when you can, you know, how many of them are shovel-ready? How many of them have, you know, cleared the physically constrained plan? How many of them, you know, do you rely on matching dollars from them? Or is it a project in which you're partnering with the federal government? So there's a lot of external factors, so where you can't say, this is the first project, this is the second project. But you will have, and the voters will have, a list of the statewide transportation priorities in the blue book before going to the voters. And the second question that I've been asked, because this is not on the ballot yet, we are collecting signatures to get it on the ballot, is I've had other people say, yeah, but how do I know that this is going to fund transportation and you're going to take this and go and put it into the negative factor for education, for example? And that's part of the reason why we've chosen to do it through the HUTF, is that's constitutional, it's protected, it can only go to transportation.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'm just going backwards one step here, just to confirm what you're saying. The, this, this has a 20-year life, and in the first year, we're planning to get about 1.18 million. But the amount will grow over time. So based on the 19 years left, I believe we're going to be getting about 1.76 million per year. Is that accurate?
That sounds accurate. We've worked with some finance firms to help us kind of project this out over 20 years. We expect a 3.54% growth rate year by year, which accounts for some higher climbs and lower decreases over a 20-year period, but that sounds correct. We currently get about 1.1 in the HUTF fund today on an annual basis.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is related to the use of these funds by local governments and trying to understand, I appreciate all the work that's been done on the Efficiency and Accountability Committee at the state level, but how do we translate that to the local level to allow cities to make use of those types of recommendations to make sure that this tremendous amount of funding that's going to local governments is also being used in an efficient and accountable way? Because as much as the Efficiency and Accountability Committee at the state level, they're simply making recommendations to CDOT as to how they should improve their processes, but how can we do the same to the cities? Will, will CDOT be backing this up, or will the cities be receiving this money and then asked to report on that? Or how is accountability driven into this process with respect to the local communities?
Good question. So what was really important to the coalition as they were planning the local distribution was the full flexibility of the funds, because the needs of Wheat Ridge are going to be slightly different than Denver maybe, but certainly different than Holyoke or Montrose. So there's full flexibility of these funds, and I think the accountability is really with the public and their, their view of how these dollars are spent and if they're spent appropriately, so.
Hmm, okay.
So for example, Mayor Mark Williams came. I had a town hall on Saturday for my constituents where we had the Let's Go campaign present, and somebody asked that of our mayor. And our mayor said, yes, we will have on our website a list of all of the transportation projects that we will be funding in Arvada with this money, so that you know what we are planning on doing with it. There's always some level of accountability. By the way, I mean, currently with the HUTF and the way that it's distributed, it's the same mechanism, it's coming to you in the same method. I served on Dr. Cog for a number of years, and so I know that there are a lot of steps, there are a lot of things that are in place before you actually get that money, that has to do with securing, you know, the bonding, making sure that it meets the constrained, physically constrained plan, making sure that it fits into the priorities, you know, for the region. And every single community, in order to receive federal funds, has to have some sort of metropolitan planning organization, because the federal government does not cut checks directly to you. They, they send it to the planning organization, and those planning organizations have put in place the kind of accountability that you're talking about. Because they have a lot of organizations, a lot of communities that want those dollars, and so those dollars are pretty competitive. And in order to make sure that the communities are working together, that everybody's getting their fair share, that they're being spent correctly and properly, all of those steps have been put in place over time.
But how does that translate to these ones, though?
It's the same, it's the same formula. It's coming to you in the exact same way. So when, when it comes to you, I'm not sure how Wheat Ridge does it, but I do know that in Arvada, we have a transportation and planning department. All of those projects have to go through council, to be approved by council and by the city manager. And we have a citizen transportation committee that, you know, weighs in and says, this is what we think you ought to do with those dollars. We also have a capital improvement project committee that's made up of citizens, where they say, here is our priority list. That's turned over to city council, and the city council votes which priorities they want to move forward with. So it's the exact same process that you're currently following for your current existing transportation dollars.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Ms. Dozeman.
So you had mentioned that you left no stone unturned. I was just curious about whether you guys had done any analysis or thoughts around potentially registering bicycles, since we've been making so many accommodations to allow for them to use our roadways?
That's a great idea. So I think a lot of communities are looking at a lot of different things, registering bicycles, increasing the electric vehicle fee, for example, so that they're, you know, paying a greater share. Those kinds of ideas, I definitely would be in favor of looking at by community, by community. But there's no statewide bicycle tax that's going to be able to generate the kind of revenue that we need in order to go to our bondholders and say, please give us, you know, $3.5 billion in bonding, or $6 billion in bonding. So I agree, there are a lot of different solutions that we should be looking at in order to make sure, because this isn't going to get us all the way. We have $9 billion worth of need in the state, and this could potentially only get us about $6 billion for the state. I do know that there are other local communities that are looking at making their cyclists register.
Additional discussion? Ms. Matthews.
I have one more comment. We also, down at the legislature this past year, through the benefit of debating Senate Bill 1, also looked at the specific ownership tax as another revenue source that wasn't accounted for in this particular presentation, but I do know that the coalition looked into that. And the reason why they looked into that is one of the coalition member organizations, Colorado Concern, really felt that if it was possible to do this through the specific ownership tax, should we explore that? Should we look at that? And what the studies came up with is that, number one, it's not, the specific ownership tax is not currently a state tax. It's a local tax. And so CML and CCI, Colorado Counties Inc. and the Colorado Municipal League, both came out really strongly in opposition to that proposal, number one. Number two, it wasn't going to produce the kind of revenue that we needed in order to make a significant difference, and so the state would not have been able to, we wouldn't be able to have carved up the formula the way that we had. It would pretty much only suffice to go to the state. We wouldn't be able to share that with, with the locals. And then third, it is a local tax. And so a lot of the, the reason why CML opposed and why the counties opposed is they said, wait a minute, that's our revenue, and if you did that, you know, you'd be cutting in. And what would end up happening is they would put up a structure that's very similar, very similar to urban renewal, where there would be an increment. So the existing tax revenue would continue funneling to the cities and states, and then the increment, they, what they would do is they would extend the specific ownership tax over time. And the curve for the specific ownership taxes, after 10 years, it drops significantly because it's based on the value of your vehicle. And so if, if we did that, the, it drops to, I don't know, just a couple of dollars, like $3 after 10 years. And what the proposal would be is not to drop it to $3 over, in 10 years, but to extend it out to 20, and to gradually over time. And then the increment between what the cities and counties are collecting and what the state would then collect was not going to be enough. So we did look at that as well.
Ms. Dozeman.
So what exactly is your ask of us as a council?
So I think there are two. One, in your packet, there should be an endorsement form. We would love to have your individual support for the ballot measure. We would also love to have, if you could pass a resolution and support as well. We've received support from a few different councils at this point. We have about 16, 17 additional presentations scheduled in the metro area, but we'd love to have your support.
Okay. Additional questions from council?
So we do have a sample resolution endorsing Let's Go Colorado. I want to tell you that I, I have worked on this, this proposal, both with the Metro mayors and with Dr. Cog, and I sent them both of those, both of those groups. Been a lot of discussion on this, a lot of, looking at a lot of different, different ways to go, different rates that, that we may happen. The one thing I know, I've been, I've had a job down in Greenwood Village over the last nine years. The one thing I know, I've been, I've had a job down in Greenwood Village over the last 90 days, and I've been driving I-25 morning and night. And it's, you know, the roads in our, in our metropolitan area and, and really statewide, need some attention. And I think this is a, is a reasonable, responsible approach to this. You know, has, has a fixed term, you know, 20-year term life on it. But, we need to, we need to work on our roads because as we look into autonomous vehicles in the future, they are going to, they're going to be driving on our road system. This is the, the way that we primarily trans, you know, get, get around in our world. You know, the other attraction on this is the, the multimodal piece. We're, you know, looking to have the goal line open soon, and, and I think we've got some positive news on that. But, you know, we, we have a lot of other opportunities with the multimodal piece. I would love to see a, a city circulator be able to ride, you know, get, get that last mile from the goal line and, and take our citizens around Wheat Ridge and be able to fully utilize that. So, I'm a, I'm a proponent of this. I, I won't mince, mince words with it. So, I would like to see, do we have a consensus on council to bring a resolution to it? Mr. Fitzgerald?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Where are you on the signatures on the petition?
We are, we have three weeks left to circulate the ballot measure. I think we are, I don't know the specific number, but we've got the, the infrastructure in place to get there. We've got, I think, 500 volunteers trained, but we also have circulators out every day, 100 circulators out every day.
Okay, so it's looking positive?
Sorry, we had a few other communities endorse. I know the city of Sheridan did. City of Westminster will be looking at it in their next meeting. City of Lone Tree did as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like we have a consensus to bring that to, that to council. Thank you. And I, I am a signature collector, so if anyone would like to sign after the meeting, I'm available. All right. Senator, thank you very much for...
So, the, the signatures are due August 6th, so we will know at that time. They'll have to go through this, the secretary of state will have to go through and verify the signatures and determine that they're run off in order to place it on the ballot?
Thank you very much for coming. Good presentation. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the discussion on Wheat Ridge 50th anniversary celebration activities.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got Heather and Sarah here to give a brief update of where we're at.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Spalding, and I'm the Communications Manager for the city of Wheat Ridge and the Public Information Officer for the city and the Wheat Ridge Police Department. And Heather Geier and I and some other members of staff have started planning the 50th anniversary for 2019. And we have some ideas already outlined for you in the memo in your packet. Some of that internal planning has already started. And we're in the process of forming a citizens committee for input on how to incorporate that celebration with existing events that are planned throughout the city for next year, like our Carnation Festival. And also, planning a gala which is scheduled for March 2nd at the Recreation Center next year. We've already started getting historic photos from residents. Those are being dropped off at city hall, so we're excited to see those. We put a request for those in connections, and we'll be doing additional outreach on social media, the website, and in our newsletters. We've created a new Facebook group, and the handle for that is CelebrateWR50. And we're going to start doing what's called seasoning that Facebook group, which means we'll start adding photos and gathering interest by the community in that group. So that when 2019 rolls around, we'll have a number of people interested in looking at that page already, that group. And so, we'll be able to increase next year a following for that group. Few other things are already in the works for next year. And I know Division Chief Lorenz has a couple of items that he was going to share with you tonight. A commemorative badge and an update on Unit 1.
Oh, okay. This is the 50th anniversary badge. Wow, that's nice. Wow.
I can stand, I won't be long. So, we designed this 50th anniversary badge. It's based on the original, the very first badge, which you can see in the trophy case in the police lobby. It was the badge that Jack Bramble wore when we started the police department in 1969. Jack Bramble was a, a member of city council. And city council got together and elected him as the first acting chief. He was, he had, he was a, he was in the Army, and he, he taught the military how to ride motorcycles. And when he came back, he lived in Wheat Ridge. And State Patrol and Jefferson County Sheriff's Department asked him to teach them how to ride motorcycles. So, I guess city council at the time said, "Well, Jack, you, you know something about law enforcement. You be the chief." And he did. It was, it was short. It was, it was a few months until we were able to hire a, a, our first chief, our first official chief, that was Ed Pinson at the time. But, this badge is a replica of the very first badge that Jack Bramble gave to us in 2005. He's since passed away, but that's a copy of that badge. And, and so, that really ties in the symbolism of our 50th anniversary. So, we're real proud of it. They all have the same number. They're all number one, just, just like, just like Jack's was. And there's no rank insignia on it. It's a solidarity issue for the department. So, it's just a fun thing to do for the, so those will be authorized from January of 2019 until December of 2019, and then it'll be retired.
Thank you.
I can tell you about the car, too. So, the very first car was purchased by Jack Bramble at 38th and Wadsworth. At that time, it was called Johnny Harper Ford. And he bought that car right off the lot. It wasn't a special police car, although it was the same model at the time. It's a 1969 Ford Galaxy. And we still have that car. It's been at shops for, well, 50 years. We got it over to Cypher Automotive, and they've been checking it out, trying to decide what they can do about it. And if they could give us estimates on fixing that, well, they got it running. So, it, it, it's not going to need a lot necessarily mechanically, but it's going to need paint and interior and all of that. So, we're working on that. Obviously, we wanted to start early so that we have had the car ready in January for 2019 that it could be used for functions, you know, to celebrate the 50th through the whole year. So, that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. So, I mentioned the gala when we first started chatting about the memo and some of our plans. We're also researching the creation of a large number of 50, like the Love and Hope sculptures that are in New York City. People stand in them, on them, around them, take photos, and post to social media. So, they're lots of fun, thinking we could move those around the city. So, we're researching the process and the cost for those. We're also in the process of creating a logo. And you all received some drafts of those. So, tonight, we'd like your input on, and consensus on the use of those. We've got two that are the seal, the traditional Wheat Ridge city seal. And then, we have three that are using our marketing brand. And the ideas were to use those, for instance, the seal perhaps on the invitation for the gala, which is a little more traditional approach. And then, the other marketing brand with that nod to the 50th anniversary on things like banners for special events. We'd like kind of the first look, first peek at the new logo, commemorative logo, to be at the Carnation Festival this August. And invite residents and visitors to come on back next year and celebrate all the wonderful things that we have planned for 2019. So, would love your input on those ideas. Any questions?
Go to Ms. Dozeman.
So, my only thought is that I didn't see a lot of mention of the Wheat Ridge Historical Society. I had noticed that there's a May event to be determined at the historical park. But, I would just kind of encourage you to maybe reach out because they have an entire library of articles and memorabilia. We did some research with the Carnation Festival for, like, the first celebration. So, they are a rich resource for all of our 50 years.
Thanks. And there, the, the mention on the list of ideas really is an, is an outline for us, a guideline, so to speak. So that when we meet with the, the citizens group that's being formed, we have a place to start. But absolutely, they will be a, a big part of that effort.
Ms. Duran.
Thank you. How about the Wheat Ridge Fire Department? I know that they have an original fire truck that they've kept. It'd be nice to have them included in this process, too.
Excellent idea. Mr. Matthews.
Chief, how much are those badges costing a piece? I noticed that if the officers want one, they'll have to buy it. What's the approximate cost on those?
They're $72.50.
Okay. And those would be worn daily for the year, or not?
Right. Yeah, they're, they're authorized to be worn for those officers that choose to, to purchase them. Then, they're, they would be allowed to keep them in a display as, as we dictate in policy, the way we, we do badges that way.
Do we have covered parking for patrol car one, somewhere where it's protected out of the elements?
I'm working that out. We, we do have some space periodically in our evidence building. So, it depends on if we have a case going that requires that space, where I, I think what we plan to do is just bring it in and out, and it would be, for short periods of time, that it would be outside, but most of the time...
These are not adverse comments, by the way. I'm just trying to think ahead of it.
It's a, it's a good question. We want to take care of it after, after we get it looking good, for sure.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And I think it's great that we're able to celebrate the past 50 years of Wheat Ridge. What I'd like to see is, how can we sort of look forward to the next 50 years, or 100 years, or however long? And so, one of my questions is, could we look at maybe planting 50 oak trees? Or some way to sort of celebrate, well, you know, in 50 years, how did we celebrate the 50th anniversary? Well, we planted 50 trees, and they can use that as a, as a way to, you know, sort of look towards the future versus, you know, I think it's great that we're celebrating our past and doing that, but try to implement ways that we can celebrate what's to come, or the next 50.
Thank you.
And, and I think part of the, part of the impetus for, for updating the neighborhood revitalization strategy is that as a community, not only to sort of see where we've been and where we might be now, but also what is our, what is our projections out to the future? So, good comment. Mr. Pond.
Well, I just want to echo support for the effort and the product, I guess specifically. I'd say that the logos that I'm seeing are, are good. I don't know when we're going to share our preferences. There's rumor on this side of the table that Ms. Dozeman likes the second on the first page, but that's just a rumor. But, I'd be willing to support that if it was true, so, anyway. But, when we get to that point, I appreciate the work, and we get to the point of choosing if that's what you need us to do.
Are we looking for a consensus, consensus now? Okay, so this is the, this is the tough part, you know, looking, looking at logos. So, let's, let's do that. We've got this page in front of you. And we, so we have the, the top one and the bottom one?
A and B.
Okay, A and B. So, A is on top and B is on the bottom. All those councillors in favor of A, the one on the top, please raise your hand.
Can I just clarify? This is for the invitations, correct? To put on the invitations?
It would be the invitations and a number of other uses.
Okay.
Might be street banners on 38th, for instance.
A? We have one vote for A. How about the, the lower one for B? Looks like B, B was the consensus, so. And then, we, and then, now we have, explain how we would use this either, this is three options here?
So, and, and one is a little bit of a nuance. If you look at the number 50, the top one might be more reminiscent of a mile an hour sign. And the other one's a little thicker. I don't know how else to describe those, but that's really the significant change in those two. And then, this one has celebrating 50 off to the side of the logo. So, if we want to, A, B, C, and these would be the banner that we might hang on the cart for Carnation Festival that city council will, that Tim will write in, the Carnation Festival parade.
Okay, so we're, we're doing the, is this, is this A?
Do that one, A?
Okay, so this is A, and then, B at the top, and C at the bottom. Okay, so this is A, B is at the top, C is at the bottom. All those in favor of A? That would be one like this. So, we have three votes for that. All of those voting for B, the one at the top, we have three votes for B.
You get to break the tie.
And then, we have, we have C. Okay, so we don't have any votes for C. Okay, so.
It's up to you, Mayor.
So, you know, the mayor, we have a weak mayor system, and that's generally a, a wise thing. I'm a B for Bud, and so, I would, I would go for B, but I think that's, you know... Well, let's, let's, let's go to the charter. All right, so, anyway, that...
And then, just general consensus, too, on the rest of the ideas and thoughts. We appreciate the comments you had, and please, if you have other suggestions and thoughts, please pass them on to Sarah.
You know, pass them on, and...
And if you know of people who'd like to participate on the committee, please also invite those participants to join us when we send out that notice.
Ms. Dozeman.
So, I did just want to mention that the, the Grange's Fire Department Museum, I think, is about ready. Yeah, so, that would be something to consider as well. I think that'd be a, a great event.
Mr. Matthews.
Chiefs, I kind of liked that memorial badge. And I'm referring to something, when I was in high school, we had some, when I was playing basketball, we had the blue sock award. And after every game, someone got the blue sock. And the next game, they got to wear it on one foot. It was supposed to be a little bit of a secret, but just kind of a morale thing. And I'm thinking, if we're going through the expense of having these memorial badges, 50-year badges, built, perhaps we could use those for morale builders, not just for one year, but on down through time, where someone gets a commendation, it may be something that for that year, they can wear that number one badge.
So, so we do, we are going to strike a, a new challenge coin, if you're familiar with challenge coins. We were waiting for you to decide on this logo. We'll put the logo on one side, and we'll put the badge on the other. And, and they're going to come out really nice, and then we'll be able to use those for a variety of different things. The badges are kind of specific to police, so we kind of keep those, we, we kind of guard those pretty closely. But, we'll have, we'll, we'll do a, a good number of challenge coins.
Great. Ms. Dozeman.
Sorry, just one last comment. If cost is an issue for some of the department, I'd be willing to donate some of my funds to those badges.
So, maybe we can, it looks like we have consensus on that around council, so maybe we can buy down the cost of that and help our officers out. We'll, we'll work on kind of what a good, what a good sharing arrangement would be. And, you know, amongst, amongst the council, I, I hope that you will go out to your constituents and really talk this up. I think this is a real great opportunity for our city to sort of come together and, and have a great celebration, and we can do it all year long. Okay. Thank you very much, ladies, for joining us. Okay, that completes item number two. Item number three is the 2017 Code Enforcement Strategies TLC update. And we've got the chief here. Chief, welcome. You got a, and Division Commander Lorenz, thank you for joining us, and I will turn the podium over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we have annually given sort of an update on code enforcement... Thank you, Mayor. So, we have annually given sort of an update on code enforcement and the activities that we've done on an annual basis, and then have also covered, you know, updates or recommendations for the future. So, Division Chief Lorenz, you know, has the Patrol Operations Division. Our code enforcement, our Community Services Team, actually, does code enforcement, animal control, and parks enforcement is, you know, is under his leadership and guidance, so I've asked Jim, he prepared this year's memo, and I've asked him to do a presentation, and I'll be here to back him up if he needs to.
Thanks, Chief. So, you have the staff report, and you had an opportunity to take a look at that. So, I didn't want to, I don't want to go too far on this. If you have questions, we're able to answer any questions. We're really happy with the way code enforcement has changed since 2008, when we went to our administrative citation model, and there are several municipalities in the state of Colorado that have borrowed our model and adapted it to their city. It is, it is still today, 10 years later, the kind of the state of the art for code enforcement managed by police departments. You see a little bit different system in cities that don't, that have code enforcement as part of community development, or something of that nature. We think this works pretty well. All of the, we have 10 neighborhoods now that have qualified as TLC neighborhoods. We have done six, seven corridors in town. You know, sometimes it can be a slow process, but it is, it is pretty complicated to get everybody on board, and we've really been very successful doing that without having to write a lot of summonses or use a lot of stick approaches. We've used a lot of the carrot kinds of approaches that have made this program successful. We've added the hotel motel inspections, green belt assessments, dumpster days. Those are the proactive kinds of things that we do now. So, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer any questions you might have, or some ideas that you might have.
Questions from council. Mr. Urban?
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that's been done, and I think that the results speak for themselves. However, it's sort of the old adage that the squeaky wheel gets the oil, and so, while we see a lot of efficiency and productivity within code enforcement, it seems as though when it goes bad, it goes really bad, and that there are those properties or those situations where you might have 912 violations just on that one property. And so, I guess, you know, as it relates to some of those sticky wickets, or whatever you want to call it, that go on and on, how can we deal with those better, or in a way to, I know that, you know, we have one case that's in federal court. I mean, we have all these sort of issues, and we're able to solve a majority of them, but then there's just these handful that come up, and it becomes difficult to deal with. So, how can we either better handle those, or in some way, lay down the law when it's needed? Because it seems like with certain properties, that, you know, we get rid of one issue, but another issue comes, follows right back on the heels of that one, and so, it never gets resolved. That may not be an answerable question, but I just appreciate all the work that's been done, but it's those other properties that continue to be the problem.
You know, some of the difficulties are not just difficulties. They're part of the Constitution, they're part of due process. We have to do things in the proper order and give people adequate opportunity to correct things. We do warnings, we do citations. Ultimately, we get to a point where we have to do an abatement. We go in, clean up the property, send them a bill, basically, is how we do that. And then a different, as you said, it's very common for another issue to come up on these properties, and we have to start all over. It's not like we can charge people with issues that they don't already have. Then now these things develop later, we have to start the due process over again. So, sometimes I know it can be frustrating when you live in an area where you have problems like that, but we are pretty confident that we clean them up over time. We get things settled over time. I don't know how better I could answer that.
Zach, maybe if I can jump in there real quick. That's an issue that I've, have an issue with, too. There's those properties, I don't think we have the teeth necessary in our code to maybe address those habitual property owners, and I've asked the chief and his staff to put together a meeting. Actually, I think we have one scheduled this Friday, so to meet with our legal counsel to look at recommendations for, is there more teeth we can put in the code? Because there are, I mean, if there's somebody that keeps having issues, they get, they clean it up, but then they have another issue. They clean it up in time, but they have another issue. That's not fair to the neighborhood, right? So, you know, what can we do for those habitual type of properties? So, we're going to start talking about that on Friday.
I guess, you know, just to add on to that real quick, as it relates to the neighbors in the neighborhood, you know, that have issues with these properties, they might not necessarily see everything that the police department has done, or will do, or the process that's going on, on paper. They're just looking at that property, it hasn't been fixed yet, so they're just sort of, so along those same lines, what can we do to notify the neighbors better as to what has actually happened on the paper and the process to resolve these situations, so that they're at least aware that their complaints have been responded to?
Right, so, when, just to answer that question, and I want to go back to previous discussion, you know, if we have a reporting party who wishes to be contacted, you know, that community services officer will always follow up with that person. We don't follow up with the whole neighborhood, because we, obviously, we don't know who, you know, that may be an issue with or not, but we have had some cases that have involved neighborhoods, and we've gone out on some of the significant ones, and we've met with, you know, with the residents. That's what we do with the TLC program. The whole idea behind that is to get, you know, the, all of the property owners, people that live there, people that, you know, have rental properties, so we can talk about the issues, so everybody's hearing what the issues are, and then that spurs, you know, a discussion and debate, and then gives us an idea of how we need to focus, you know, our efforts. To get to your earlier question, you know, in 2005, when I became the chief, we had a code enforcement case that had been in criminal court for over 18 months, and it was in the courts. We had no power, once it got into the court system, to really start to address some of the continuing problems that developed. So, that was really sort of the impetus to say, well, what are other jurisdictions throughout the United States using in terms of dealing with code issues? So, our administrative model process, you know, holds us to a civil standard of a preponderance of evidence, where, you know, criminal case is, you know, beyond a reasonable doubt, higher threshold there in regards to, you know, your burden of proof. So, from the perspective of what code does over the years, you can see in the stats, I mean, we're anywhere between 1,500 to 1,800, you know, warnings and first citations a year. I mean, that's, and that's not, you know, all of the charges, that's just, you know, incidents that we're dealing with. So, you know, you only hear about half a percent, you know, of all of those that come up, and those can be challenging. We've seen that in the past year with the duplex up on 38th Avenue, very, very challenging situation to deal with. A lot of issues that went beyond just what our community service officers typically deal with, with, you know, weeds, junk, trash, debris, dead trees, those kinds of things. It really got into, you know, some pretty significant, you know, zoning and, you know, health, you know, sort of standards. We had one the year before with a business along the I-70 corridor that does concrete work and asphalt work. It doesn't really impact our residents, but it impacts residents in Denver, and so, we're starting to deal with that one again, too, and some of those issues from that particular place. So, it just really, you know, broadens what, in terms of the scope of the problem is, but we're willing, as we noted in some of the recommendations for this year, we've noted, here are some things that we'd like to start working on with guidance from you in terms of trying to deal with some things where we see some gaps, and Patrick and I, and, I mean, everybody's certainly identified there's a gap with these habitual property owners, but, you know, it's, you know, there are a lot of constitutional law, state constitution implications, so we want to make sure that we walk through those, and that we're thoughtful in regards to how we proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
I would remind council, too, that we only have part of the process here, because we hire Judge Randall. We're more or less in charge of the court systems, and at some point in time, with a lot of these serious ongoing problems that do end up in court, and perhaps we need to be a little more vocal in making our feelings known to the court system on how we would like to proceed, and maybe put some teeth back in that part of the system also.
You know, I appreciate the sentiment. You have to be really, really careful with that, because it can taint, you know, that court process, and so, when we have our EMT meetings every Tuesday morning, and the judge is in there, and Patrick and I are talking about a case, we have to recuse the judge, you know, because if he's going to hear that case, he can't be tainted by any of those things. And judges sort of operate, even though, you know, he works effectively for you, also works for, you know, the state's courts, and so, he has to make sure that he closely follows, you know, criminal procedure and criminal rights and stuff. So, see, just, I'm just saying, you just want to be careful about how far down the road you want to, you want to kick that particular can, you know, when it comes to, you know, the, you know, judges and judicial system, so.
Chief, I noticed that we had some employment challenges over the last couple of years. Do you think there's any structural issues there, or have we kind of overcome that shortcoming?
You know, citywide, I think, in a lot of positions, we've seen some staffing challenges. So, what we've noticed, and we'll talk about the same issue from a police officer perspective, you know, right now, our unemployment rate's about 2%, 3%. It is really tough to find people that want to do that kind of job. So, we are in our third hiring process to fill positions, vacancies that we have. We have two current vacancies, you know, we have seven authorized positions there that are permanent, community service officer positions. One of those is a lead, but we've been down to, you know, three to four people over the course of the last, you know, two and a half years, just with, you know, attrition, you know, that we've had, retirements that we've had. So, in trying to fill those, you know, we have a, you know, the process to work within a police department is, the bar is set a little bit higher. You know, you'd have to do polygraphs, and we do psychologics and stuff even for our community service officers, because we have to have people that can, you know, communicate effectively with the public that they meet there. So, you know, they're compared to what their norm of those kinds of people that do those kinds of jobs, and not to the police officer norm. But, you know, we've struggled, you know, to look at those positions. When we go into our budget setting process, we want to take a look at salaries again. You know, our community service officers aren't just code officers, they really do three functions for us. So, they're kind of a unique breed. When you look at some of the larger cities around us, they're not just code officers, they're also animal control officers, and they do a lot of our park enforcement for us. So, they really have three functions that they, you know, they have to, they have a really good knowledge base on. So, it's turned out to be a difficult position to hire. We just made an offer, we have a young lady that started last week, and that'll give us one vacancy to fill coming up. We're going to try to get that filled, you know, this year. We've had some difficulty getting seasonal park rangers hired this year, so both public works and parks have seen similar challenges with, you know, hiring employees that are at the lower end of, you know, the salary structure, and, you know, we've had some difficulties getting folks hired there. In fact, I think by the time we do get somebody hired there, it'll be the end of the park season, but we're going to, we're going to make a good faith effort to get it done anyway. But it's a challenge, not only for Wheat Ridge, but frankly, in talking to my peers and other jurisdictions, you know, everybody's challenged right now in terms of that recruitment and retention in the public safety field. And Jim just reminded me of a good point, too. We've had two of our CSOs that have gone on to become officers. One became an officer here, Daniel Southwick, he's, and he just got out of the field training program, so we're really proud of his accomplishment. And then Michael Laura just went to Rappo County as a deputy, so that's the other, that's the other challenge. And then Kayla, that was another CSO that became an officer here, and she's out on her own as well. So, it has been a little bit of a pipeline.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, thank you very much, Chief, and Officer Lorenz?
Just the only other thing, in terms of the recommendations on the last page, the items two, three, you know, and four, is council all right with us looking at updating our ordinances to look at native grasses? That seems to be an issue that we're seeing more and more of out there, as well as artificial turf is another issue that we've been dealing with. There's some really nice artificial turf that can be purchased, that some people have set out special use permits, so that's something that we could certainly bring back in terms of a staff report, you know, to cover, and then obviously, we'll work on what Patrick has already covered as well, so.
Do we have consensus around that? Good. Proceed, Chief. Thank you. If you'd like to, are you handling our crime update also?
So, I'll do the crime update, because oftentimes, it's easier sometimes to put all of this information into a PowerPoint. I have that, but the staff report to you sort of outlines, you know, crime from a national, a state, and a local perspective, and it also covers some of the data that was in this last citizen survey in regards to where the citizens of Wheat Ridge that responded to that survey saw law enforcement and their feelings of safety in the community. I think the, you know, if I could stress one thing to all of you and the community as a whole, is crime is up. It's up nationally rather significantly, particularly nationally, violent crime is up. Statewide, both violent crime and property crime are up, and we don't hit all the categories in terms of all of the crimes that are reported, but certainly, from a property crime perspective, we've seen some increases from 2014 and 15, and also from an assaults perspective, both aggravated assaults, simple assaults, and sexual assaults, we've seen some increases. So, I just wanted to sort of walk you through a PowerPoint that I think might make it a little bit easier, maybe, for all of you to understand, if I could, please? If I can get this thing to work, I might have to go up here.
Chief, is this PowerPoint on the staff drive?
I'm available.
Okay.
So, in the staff report that you all have, the FBI classifies crimes a couple of different ways. The first way is uniform crime reporting. They list crimes as part one and part two, but they also are utilizing what's called the National Incident-Based Reporting System, NIGRS. The big difference, to simplify it and make it easy, is UCR looks at the most serious crime that occurs. So, if you have a homicide that involved a sex assault, burglary, and a car theft, it would just report on the homicide. The other crimes that were committed wouldn't be reported. NIGRS reports on all those crimes. We use NIGRS, we report all of our data to CBI using NIGRS, but CBI then takes that and reconverts it to UCR, because nationally, we're not, as a nation, not ready to go to NIGRS 100% yet. So, what we've done is, we've listed our crimes out as type one and type two, and they follow the UCR guidelines in terms of violent crimes and property crimes for part one, but we report on all the incidents. So, the data that you see here today, broken down, will report on all the incidents that we've had in 2017. So, if you look at type one crimes, so those are all your serious crimes, your homicides, forceful sex assault, sex assault, robbery, ag assault, simple assault, and then burglary, theft, fraud, motor vehicle theft, and arson. theft, fraud, motor vehicle theft, and arson, you'll see this trend line going back to 2011. Crime was relatively stable. It trended up, trended back down, it really dropped in 14, and then 15, and 16, and then 17, we've seen a steady increase. And that has been a reflection of what has occurred both nationally and statewide. So if you looked at those part one crimes, the serious crimes, in terms of their makeup and the percentage they make up, I won't go through all of that, but you can see theft accounts for a really big chunk of that pie, and so does motor vehicle theft, followed by frauds and forgeries, and then assaults and burglaries over here. But here's some pretty interesting data I thought that you might want to know. Aggravated assaults increased by 43% from 2016. This is, obviously, it's extremely high, and particularly, we look at our five-year average. Why is that? Well, there are a couple of changes in the law that have impacted that. First, we have elder abuse law. Now it impacts both aggravated and simple assaults. But the definition of what serious bodily injury has changed. Strangulation now is considered a serious bodily injury. Before, you really had to have a sign that there was something broken or bruised, or you know, something that was pretty significant. Now, the mere fact that you have a strangulation involved or may not be any marks or injuries is enough to consider that to be an aggravated assault. So that's one of the other changes that has occurred there as well. Also, you know, the education of medical staff has improved. Doctors are more aware of what the requirements for serious bodily injury are. Simple assaults are up as well, and I'll touch on that. Our domestic violence and assaults, and you'll see this in a slide later, domestic violence is not a specific crime. It's an enhancer. So it's a sentencing enhancer. So if we go to a DV call where there's an assault, you know, it's the assault that's the criminal piece of that, but it's the domestic violence piece that's the sentencing enhancer of that. And it really directs law enforcement, you know, to handle those cases in a specific manner and methodology compared to just an assault between, let's say, two people at a bar. Our sex assaults are up as well when compared to other years. About 50% of our sex assaults are people who are familiar with one another. It's somebody that knows, knows the other person, so the suspect and victim are acquaintances, they may be friends, there's some sort of relationship there. So a pretty significant piece of that is our people that know one another. Only four of the sex assaults that we had in 2017 involved an unknown suspect, somebody that wasn't known to the victim. There are a number of other correlations that we look at here, but I think from the public's knowledge, you know, and they hear that because it's pretty significant, 13% increase is pretty significant, they need to know that half of those are, you know, are two people that are familiar with one another. And only four of the total that we had in that timeframe involved a stranger-related sex assault. Motor vehicle thefts right now are the things that is the prime that drives us. Statewide, motor vehicle theft was up 22% in 2017. There's some data in that staff report. It was up about 9% for us, but this is a pretty significant driver for us, both in terms of thefts of motor vehicles as well as the recovery of motor vehicles. And for those of you that don't know, I was a victim of a motor vehicle theft this year. One truck stolen in the driveway while I was working. But it's one of those trucks that people like to see of, so it even happened to the police chief. So this gives you, just, you know, it's a heat map, it gives you an idea of where type one violent crimes, so remember those of the aggravated assaults, sex assaults, homicides. I mean, Wheat Ridge is pretty fortunate. We don't have a lot of homicides. You know, we average about one homicide every three, four years. We do have attempts, and we have vehicular homicides, which we generally have a bunch of vehicular homicides a year, where somebody is driving under the influence of drugs or alcohol, causes an accident, takes somebody's life. But you can see that a lot of our violent crime tends to follow our major transportation corridors, and certainly the I-70 and Kipling corridor from about Fort Worth north to city limits presents some unique challenges for the community and police department as well. The type one property crimes, you remember, those are like simple thefts, criminal trespasses to vehicles, misdemeanor thefts, misdemeanor larcenies, runaways, curfew violations, alcohol violations, minor drug violations. This just kind of gives you an idea. I mean, crime does, you know, happens everywhere. If you pull up crime maps in similar cities, if you look at West Denver, you'll see a similar type of map. We are a reflection of the community that Wheat Ridge is located in. We're located in a large metropolitan area and a large park ranger area. So I-70 and several major highways that go through our community, our population during the day, you know, swells considerably, it'd be at 70, 75,000 easily a day when everybody's at work and you get all of these people driving through our community. So I get this question asked a lot, where is crime occurring? So here are the top locations where crimes occur. You see the numbers are pretty small because, you know, if you look at these other two maps, I mean, you know, an overlay, I mean, you've got crime occurring in a lot of places. You know, but about 3% of crime occurs at Lutheran. Over half of the crime that occurs at Lutheran is related to patients who assault staff. You know, that Lutheran hospital, all of our hospitals have changed significantly from where they were 25, 30 years ago in terms of their clientele. Our hospitals gets a lot of people right now with mental health issues, substance abuse issues, you know, that come from outside our city. And oftentimes, you know, these people, you know, are in there, they're being treated, you know, because of whatever condition they have, either substance abuse or mental health issue, will end up assaulting staff. And we have occasion that's a pretty serious assault. They're pretty serious crimes. The American, you know, is also there at the top. And then it's not unusual at our retail centers for, so for Walmart, that's for half a year. I mean, they were, they left the city by July last June. So that's a half a year's worth of data right there. You know, when we go shopping at King Supers or Safeway, I mean, we're going there to purchase something, right? We're going to the store. There are people that go to Safeways and King Supers and Walmarts to shop at the parking lot. And what they're looking for is somebody that's left something of value in their vehicle, has left a vehicle unlocked, that makes them a pretty easy target. And so we talked a little bit about crimes of elder abuse. So there were 67 cases of elder abuse. This was up significantly from where it had been the previous year. So I think most of you are familiar, but elder abuse is sort of like child abuse, but it involves, you know, elders and special risk people. But you have a physical component, a psychological, financial, and a collect kind of thing, pretty similar to other types of abuse that we have laws around. Assaults account for 28% of, you know, all the elder abuse we have, followed by reports of sex assault. These are generally in group homes, some of the nursing homes that we have, and then 1% robbery and a protection order violation there. But it'll give you a breakdown. The big one is, you know, is theft extortion. We deal with a lot of financial issues involving our elderly system, citizens. And I would see this changing as our community goes through this process of citizens who are getting older, I think will deal more and more with us. Our DA's office is very committed to prosecuting these cases. Our officers have received training frequently on what constitutes elder abuse and what to look for. So I think as people, hospitals and officers and therapists get more attuned to what elder abuse is, I think we'll see more reported cases there. These are the type two crimes. Again, this just gives you a bigger snapshot. We've included domestic disturbance and domestic violence in there, even though they're not crimes. If you remember from previous presentations, a domestic disturbance is a call that we might proceed on a domestic between two people where we can't prove a crime occurred. We average somewhere between 350 and 400 calls for service in this particular area right here, and there's just not enough to prove, you know, crime has been committed from a probable cause perspective. And then the domestic violence piece could attach itself to an assault or harassment, criminal mischief, any of these other crimes if there's an intimate relationship between two partners that's involved in that. So if you look at type two crimes, they're actually, they've been trending down since 2011 and then started to trend up slightly in 2017. So the big driver for us right now are those type one calls for service. I've thrown a couple of other slides in here just because I want to give you the total picture. And this one, if you look at the types of type two crimes we have, you know, the big drivers here, first, a criminal trespass. This is generally somebody leaving something of value in their car. So, and we respond on a lot of these on a daily basis where somebody's left a computer or wallet, money, GPS device, a cell phone in a vehicle, and quite frequently, the vehicle's left unlocked. It's just a feeling that they parked it on the street and it'll be fine. You know, the other big ones, domestic disturbance is set between 350 and 400. We're at 387, 332 DV cases, and 284 drug-related violations, and I'll touch on those in my other presentation. Last year, 120 DUI arrests, that was down from previous years as well. So here's the slide on DV. Increased 26% in 2017. Can't necessarily put a specific. I had the crime analysts look at it, say, you know, is there anything that sticks out in terms of a red flag for us to look at? Nothing really in particular, although the strangulation laws have had an impact on this because strangulation is now considered a serious bodily injury kind of case. So even if there's not evidence of that in terms of injury, it can still be considered SBI. The past might have been considered, if there was no injury, it would be considered a harassment, you know, at most. So 2017 by the numbers, we'll have this in our annual report. We had 41,633 calls for service, 13,000 case reports that we took, issued 4,000 traffic summons, made a little over 1,900 arrests, investigated 1,700 traffic accidents, and conducted 330 field interview contacts. That sounds like a lot, but that was down last year. And we'll talk a little bit, we talked in the memo about that. Our calls for service were down about 12%. Traffic citations down considerably, 32%, arrests down 28%. And not much of a change, 6% is not much of a statistical anomaly, more is 2% in terms of accidents. Field interview cars were down. So in the staff report that I provided to you, we talked a little bit about that, our staffing last year from a patrol perspective was down. We were never fully staffed last year. In fact, we got to the point where we took our traffic team and reemployed them to patrol to, so we had the number of officers we needed, you know, to safely respond to calls for service. We have open call operational readiness numbers for time of day and day of week. We really needed those people to work there. So those had a significant impact on, you know, self-initiated calls for service, traffic citations were down. We also saw, you know, increases in some of our serious felony crimes. So that meant there was more time spent investigating those than might have been spent. So self-initiated activity overall was down last year and has been down for part of this year as well. We're just now with the last class that we hired in a position where we're over strength, but we get 70 people that are in field training right now, so we're not really driving around in the police car. We've got a number six in the academy right now, but we hope by the end of the year, we'll be at full strength. So the other thing I like to look, when I see these numbers and say, oh, man, we're down on these things, is what does our response to the different priority calls for service look like? So here, we've listed out priority one, two, three, and four. This was the 2017 numbers in terms of how long it took for a call for service to come in and for us to respond to. This is what it looked like in 16. So not much of a difference, you know, eight seconds here, you know, five-second reduction of priority two. So priority ones are all of those calls that, you know, could be a robbery in progress, burglary in progress, fighting in progress. These are in-progress kinds of calls for service of serious nature. Priority two, three, and four are all based on the severity of the reported crime, but generally, it doesn't require as immediate a response as priority one. Priority one, priority two are the two calls we're really look at. Code issues, animal patrol issues generally fall in this area, quote reports, those kinds of things fall. So we were talking about transportation. So this is what accidents looked like, looked like in the city of Wheat Ridge last year. You see, there's no surprise here, I said, I think Kipling, major infrastructure needs there. Wadsworth is a narrow corridor for the volume of calls, and we see a lot of accidents there as well. So the purple here denotes a serious bodily injury, types of accidents and stuff. So it gives you a view of excuses, 50%, 57% of our accidents are in Kipling-Wadsworth along the I-70 corridor, so over half. And Jim and I will have you answer the questions while we...
Thank you, Chief. Questions from counsel? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Merigus. As we look at the increase in domestic violence, is there any way to differentiate the numbers of individuals who are reporting that violence and an increase in the reporting of those instances versus an increase in the overall numbers of people being assaulted? Or how do you determine the way that that cuts?
I'll take a swag at it, and Jim can fill in. So, you know, there is, there is a constant amount of education that goes on, both from a prosecution perspective and a law enforcement perspective in regards to domestic violence. It is something that, you know, the chiefs and sheriffs and DA talk about numerous times throughout the year in regards to the kinds of cases we're seeing and changes that we might be seeing in terms of the law. You know, there is, I think, a feeling among advocacy groups that there's even more domestic violence going on than we're aware, and they're probably right. I think the biggest challenge that, you know, I have as a police chief in this particular area is looking at the number of domestic disturbances that we respond on versus the number of DV cases where we actually charge somebody. Because some of those domestic disturbance cases, you know, it's where you've run into just totally uncooperative parties. You've got no broken furniture, there's no broken dishes, there, you know, there's no obvious injury there. And, but you know that there is a form of domestic violence going on, and it's a matter of trying to prove that. And that is, I think, the biggest challenge that, you know, that we have and face because certainly, I think there's a feeling amongst the state advocacy groups that we're missing, we're still missing a population there of people who are involved in actual DV incidents that we're just not able to prove a crime. I hope that sort of addresses your question.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Ann?
Can you tell me, what is the difference between domestic violence and domestic disturbance?
So domestic violence is when we can prove a crime. So it's when, it's when we get to that threshold that we can prove from a probable cause perspective that crime's been committed. Domestic disturbance are those cases where we respond, there's certainly been an argument, you know, something has occurred, but there's just no evidence of crime. And so if there's no evidence of crime, if we don't meet that probable cause threshold, then it's something that we can't, we just can't charge somebody, you know, without being able to prove that.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah, that helps.
Additional questions? Ms. Shaver?
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Please go ahead.
There's, you had increased training for mental health, dealing with mental health people. Has, has that been helpful? Do you see evidence of that helping out in the field?
Well, you know, and, and I made note of that, so thanks for, for bringing that up, Janelle. You know, we talked last year about, you know, the, the big issues that we're seeing in the city in mental health. You know, people suffering from mental health is, is still a pretty significant issue. So we had said that we were going to get all of our, our officers over three years trained in CIT, or there's an eight-hour class, you know, first response, mental health first aid training for first responders. So we have gotten well over 90% of our folks that meet those criteria trained. Very proud of that. We're going to be submitting our agency for IACP, that's the International Association of Chief's Police Recognition, you know, as soon as we get a couple more numbers there, you know, to show that, that we take first, you know, that, that mental health piece, you know, pretty seriously. But to answer your question specifically, yes. Anything that we can do to train our officers to be better communicators and to de-escalate situations, I think makes us a better police department. And, and I think that certainly has been reflective in, in terms of how we handle a lot of the situations our officers, you know, encounter. You know, we, you know, and within Jefferson County, we have very strong mental health, law enforcement training programs. And I, and I think you see a different kind of response to those issues within Jefferson County and Wheat Ridge than you might see in some other jurisdictions. So, and I can't give you specific hard data, but, but I can say, you know, you just have to read the newspaper, and there are some of those things that, that just don't happen here. We work really hard at trying to de-escalate and, and communicate. And again, over 80% of our patrol staff over three years has been CIT trained. That's a big commitment by, by the PD and the city, you know, to send officers to 40 hours' training specifically to deal with people in mental health crisis.
Thank you, Mr. Urban.
With respect to the Lutheran Medical Center and the extra-duty officers, how is that paid for, or how are, how are we covering that?
So, police department, if, if you remember in the budget in, in the police administration, has a line item for extra-duty employment, and so we contract out. With Lutheran, they, they'll pay our officers, I think it's 40, so $40 an hour to work extra duty. We've identified for them our busy response times there, when we've had to respond there quite a bit. And so we're, we don't staff the hospitals seven days a week, 24 hours a day, but we're probably staffing them, you know, four or five days out of the week, anywhere from six to eight hours during their, their busy emergency room times, and we'll have an officer assigned there. So we'll send them a bill, an invoice on a monthly basis. For times we've had officers work, they reimburse us, and we do that from a budget, through a budgetary process. So it doesn't cost the city anything. We, we get, we get reimbursed on it.
And do we have a similar setup with American Motel?
No, not yet. No, 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 we don't. But it is a good suggestion. In terms of that area there, I mean, that, that area there is, is, has been a, you know, a target of both Patrick's and Ken and, and I to sit down and, and, and say, what, what can we do there? You know, how does that look? You know, certainly the redevelopment of that interchange could change the way that whole area looks there. Last year, we did about a three, four-month problem-oriented policing project there, where we sent officers over there, not so much to arrest people, but just to contact the business owners and ride their bikes and be out there and, and find out what was going on with the, you know, the good businesses we have over there, and just have a presence over there, and, and it was pretty positive. You know, we're following our crime trends right now. If we need to do that again this year, we will.
So as far as the, this is in the next update, but it relates in that of the calls for service related to the American Motel, how many of those were heroin or opioid-related? Or how do, do we break that down?
You know, I, I don't have that exact statistic, Zach. I can get it. I, I can tell you that, that corridor area up there, just from the kinds of contacts we make, and the, sort of the socio-demographics of persons we contact up there, generate a lot of the meth and heroin arrests that we make in that area up there.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Chief, I had one. For our citizens watching tonight, are there any, are there one or two items, how can people protect themselves against crime? Whether...
You know, that's a, that's a great question. So we, we have a small crime prevention unit, but we do do crime prevention programs. So the two ways that I would say citizens can protect themselves is, first of all, look at getting your, your block engaged in Neighborhood Watch. It's a free program, it just requires 50% of the neighbors to participate in that, and we'll come out and do, do the training for that, and you'll get a sign in your neighborhood that says, says you're a Neighborhood Watch neighborhood, which generally tells a criminal that, hey, there's somebody here watching, you know, these, these people have been trained. And the second way is, is to take advantage of our crime prevention through environmental design program. We will come out and look at your house. We will give you suggestions on what you can do to make your house crime-proof, and that, that, that is a very effective program. We've got several officers that are trained in that. And I'll throw a third in there, and that's, that's, you know, when, when you're out driving around, or, you know, you're parking your car in your driveway, or, you know, you know, you're working around your house, take a moment to think how a criminal thinks. So, you know, when you're working in your backyard slaving away in the summertime, and you've left both your garage doors open with your golf clubs and, you know, your, you know, your nice mountain bikes and stuff, those are opportunities for criminals. We don't view it that way. So, you know, leaving items in your car, it's just an opportunity for somebody to take advantage of you. So, so I would just tell citizens to, you know, to be smart, you know, and, and be cautious, and if they see something suspicious, to call us, and we'll get somebody out there and we'll, we'll, we'll check it out.
Great ideas. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Let, let's move on to item number five, which is the 2017 cannabis update.
So when the city council approved recreational medical marijuana in the city several years ago, they asked for an annual update on sort of marijuana and drugs in the community and things to look at. So a really short presentation here on what that looks like, and we, we've traditionally covered three areas. What drugs look like in our schools, our community, and then with our medical and recreational marijuana facilities. So if, if we compared 2017 to 2016, our arrests for drugs and alcohol in our schools increased by 6%. The charges decreased by 3%. So what that means is we made more arrests, we just didn't have any, as many charges associated with that. So in the past, you know, you get, get arrested for possession of drugs, but there might be one or two other associated charges that went with that, and that would result in an increase in the number of charges there. So, so really, I, I think the, the telling number there for me as, as Chief is, is we saw on our schools, an increase of about 6%. But if you'll remember, and I'll, I'll get to a slide here, we'd seen some pretty consistent decreases over the, the last several years as well, and I'll get to that here in just a second. So, you know, if you look at, you know, this particular slide here, this shows you what drugs and alcohol use in our schools has looked like since 2009, 2010. You know, the yellow line there is drug-related charges, and the green line is drug-related arrests. And what you'll see is in 2016 and 17, we had seen a, a pretty significant decrease in the number of arrests from 15, 15, 16 school year to 16, 17, and then a moderately low increase in 17 and 18. That's that 6% increase. And then you can see the drug-related charges dropped significantly, still above where the total arrests are, but you don't have, you didn't have that big gap between those in terms of, of multiple charges for maybe a single arrest. So, you know, here's, here's some good news. You know, there, there were no alcohol-related arrests in our schools last year. We've traditionally had those. All of the charges last year were for marijuana-related, so 81% possession of marijuana, 19% involved drug paraphernalia, which was, both were moderately low compared to previous years. This gives you a little bit better idea of what drug arrests have looked like at, at the schools. So we've listed out, you know, our middle schools and some of our elementary schools, because we have had instances of elementary-age kids bringing drugs to school, but it's, it's, it's not significant, it's more of an incident that happens during a particular school year. So this is compare 16 and 17 school year with 17 and 18. And, you know, the bottom, the activity level, shows you what, what's normal compared to the average, which is the, you know, the second line down below where the schools and the school year are listed out. So, you know, the, you know, the significant, you know, one there, you know, for, for me is we still see more possession of marijuana and drugs at our high school, which is, you would think would make sense, you know, statistically in terms of what you, what you see. But if you look at the total charges, you know, there at the, on the right end, you'll see our average is about 61 charges a year, and we, we only charged, we only had 36 charges in 2017 and 18. So to me, that speaks about maybe the, you know, the, the severity of the particular offense, and you'll see another slide here in a minute that sort of addresses, you know, that, that shows that there were no controlled substance violations outside of marijuana, arrests outside of marijuana in our schools last year. This is, it gives you more of a trend line here of where marijuana-related arrests in our schools have been. You'll see in the 2014, 15, and 15 and 16, we had 52 arrests, 58, excuse me, back in 2012, 2013, and we were up three from the last school year at 34 this, this past year. So one of the things I like to touch on is to talk about what we're trying to do from a drug and marijuana education perspective. So last year, so you're aware, our SROs conducted 81 classes that incorporated drug awareness, so information on marijuana to students. And throughout the school year, the SROs attended 52 hours of training, which included information on drugs and mental health issues in the schools as well. So we are trying to push some of that drug-based education, prevention, you know, in, in the schools. And it's just tough in the schools because they're so, they're so busy teaching to their curriculum and to the testing they have to do, it's hard to carve out an hour here and there. So drug and alcohol then used by juveniles in our community. You know, last year, we had 19 juveniles who were arrested for drugs or alcohol. You can see the stats below 13 for alcohol, six for marijuana, one was a driving under the influence case that we had. So that's been in line with where we've been at before. We also like to take a snapshot of what adult arrests look like. So we, we had 308 adults that were arrested for drugs and alcohol violations last year. That does not include the arrests that are made by the West Metro Drug Task Force. So the top charges there are controlled substances, 127 charges followed by DUI, 103 charges, possession of drug paraphernalia, alcohol, and an alcohol by minors is included So in the controlled substance area for adults, and this is a, this is a trend that we've been seeing, we've, we've seen an increase over the course of the last 18 to 24 months in the use of methamphetamine. 72% of our arrests involve meth, 16% involved heroin, 9% involved cocaine, and you start, we're starting to see from a law enforcement perspective, more cocaine use in communities throughout the state. And then 9% of what we investigated last year, or the arrests last year, involved prescription drugs. In, in terms of home grows, this, this has been an issue. So this is the other side of the legalization of marijuana, what they call the, the gray market, and could be, involve the black market as well. We'll, we'll on average get somewhere between three and six reports from citizens about suspected marijuana grows. We just recently had one up off of 38th and Parfay area up there that we, we pulled over 300 plants out of a house up there just within the last six weeks. But in 2017, we had a number of tips regarding home grows. However, you know, the number was, was pretty small, and generally if, if we go there and it's, you know, it's somebody that has, you know, six, you know, plants, maybe eight plants, we'll, we'll educate them on the laws and try to bring them into compliance. This is still a challenge, I think, for both elected officials and for, for law enforcement because of, you know, six, a six-plant marijuana grow, if it's been around for a while, it's a big grow, and there's, there are smells associated with that, and that can, that can really make neighbors, as some of you know, you know, pretty, pretty, pretty upset about that. So we, we work really hard at trying to educate those legal marijuana growers, but the gray market grows where they're growing stuff for profit. Lots of times in rental houses continues to be a challenge throughout the state. I think if you, if you read the paper at all, Pueblo County is, is just inundated with, with these things right now. Driving under the influence of marijuana, we look at as well. So we had 12 drivers in 17 that were arrested for marijuana-related DUID, so that's about 10% of, of all of our cases, was a 9% increase from 2016. And I think some of that is related to the training we're giving our officers right now in regards to the difference between an alcohol-related DUI and a drug-related. The symptoms are, are, can be quite significantly different, and there are different cues that you have to look, look at. So at our marijuana facilities, a total of 68 calls for service from all our dispensaries, that's an increase of about 10%, so an increase from, of about seven from previous year. 33% of those were alarmed, so you'll remember, S.A.T.S.A.T. requires these facilities to be alarmed both from an audio and a, a video perspective, but they only accounted for 1.6% of all the alarm calls we receive in the city annually. And then 31% for, for suspicious activity related. So these facilities will call us if, if they see, you know, suspicious activities. The graph on the, on the right-hand side will show you, you know, the different, or the percentages breakout of calls for service, and you can see they're all pretty close. Best Colorado Meds, certainly a more significant number of calls for service there than the other ones, but they're, they're all pretty similar. Last year, in 17, we had five burglaries. Some of these burglaries involved juveniles that were breaking into these facilities. They'd get all hooded up and drive vehicles into them or bust out windows. We had three disturbance calls, and then we had four theft calls. No robberies, no motor vehicle thefts, no other crimes reported at these facilities. So summary, 3% decrease overall in the number of charges in our Wheat Ridge schools, but we had a 6% increase in arrests, 15% decrease in number of juveniles charged with alcohol or drug violations community-wide. You know, we had about 10% of our total DUIs were driving under the influence of drugs, and calls for service at all our marijuana facilities accounted for about 5% of, of the overall calls for service in our city, which is pretty comparable right now to what we see with like convenience stores and gas stations, those kinds of things. I added two other slides here, I wanted to talk a little bit about heroin. I mean, you can see in, in this particular slide, pretty significant... I mean, you can see in, in this particular slide, pretty significant increase in heroin use between thirteen and fifteen. We've seen that taper a little bit. Some of this, I think, has been related to some of the prevention programs at a state level, as it pertains to opioids, as well as what the Public Health Department is doing in Jefferson County Public Health with their syringe exchange program because it's a way of, of eventually getting people into, into treatment. But overall, from a rest perspective as well, we were, started to see a downward trend from sixteen to seventeen, which is, is, is good. Twenty-eight total arrests last year, but we had one hundred and sixty-seven calls for service referencing heroin. We had ten heroin overdoses, one known heroin death in twenty seventeen. And in meth, meth is, is where we're really seeing a resurgence. And this, you can see from, it was pretty flat-lined from twelve to thirteen, and it's just been a steady increase, you know, ever since. And about one hundred and fifteen meth-related arrests, right under five hundred calls for service that reference meth, two meth overdoses. We haven't had any deaths that we're aware of as a direct result of methamphetamine. So questions?
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Maragus. As it relates to the numbers of arrests and charges within the school, are kids cleaner or are they smarter? I mean, are they getting away with it or are they actually, is there a reduction in the consumption of marijuana?
You know, I, I don't know that we have a handle on that. I think if, if you would talk to, you know, school administrators and, and the SROs, they'd probably tell you a little bit of both. You know, it, it, even though, you know, we've seen this move to legalize marijuana, you know, half of the candidates I'll, I'll interview have never smoked marijuana at all. So that, that's a good sign, you know, when you're talking to young people that, you know, haven't, haven't been involved in, in that. So I do think that there's probably some strong family education going on out there. Do I think that there, there are kids that are smarter? Yeah, you know, there's certainly that.
Yeah, because a smart kid would say, I don't smoke marijuana, I eat it or vape it or whatever else they do with it. It doesn't necessarily, you know, twenty years ago, some kid was smoking pot at school, everybody could smell it. But today, you...
Right. So your schools and SROs are pretty attuned to kids who come in and are under the obvious influence of marijuana. But as, as you said, there's lots of ways to ingest it. And, you know, it's not as easy to detect as, as you, as you used to. So, you know, the, the other survey instrument that's used is, is, is the one that they do in schools that looks at marijuana and drug use. And that is still shows things are pretty consistent. There haven't been any significant increases there. But the, the tough part of that is Jefferson County doesn't participate in that particular survey. So it's really tough for us to get a handle on, on what that, what that might look like in, in our schools.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Matthews.
If I can back up just a tad, are you noticing more calls for service on and along the Green Belt? A lot of my constituents back up to the Green Belt or whatever, and I'm starting to hear rumblings of problems. And, you know, is, are you seeing that trend?
So, so in our summer months, that's, that's when we will get increased calls for service because so many people are using the Green Belt. Jim can, might be able to speak to this. We just did an assessment down there and, you know, I had a couple camps that we, we'd found down there that we were able to contact people and, and post it and then, and then get the areas cleaned up. But I'm not aware of a significant increase in, in calls for service specifically related to that. It's something we can look at, but Jim, are you aware of anything?
Yeah, it's been pretty consistent over the last several years as to the amount of activity that we see in the Green Belt. And I think our, our assessments of the Green Belt, when we go in and, and look for things and clean up things, helps keep that down. You know, in general, I don't, I don't think we have the resources in the Green Belt that's really attractive to people. It may be a place to, to sleep perhaps, but, but they, it's difficult to get food, it's difficult to get water, it's, I mean, they just don't have the resources to actually live there. So we don't see a lot of that.
Thank you.
One of the things that, that we'll sometimes see, and I haven't heard of it yet this year, you know, or it has to do with bicyclists. You know, you'll get bicyclists that really motor down the, you know, that, that Green Belt. That'll, that'll get some of our older residents rightfully, you know, upset. We haven't heard a whole lot of complaints around that. We did have to address some issues around people who were living out of trailers at Prospect Park. That, that was an issue last year. It hasn't risen at least to the chief's level this year. But I know that at a couple of the other parks in the city, we've, we've addressed issues of illegal, illegal camping with, with people in some of our other parks. And some of it's not necessarily the homeless. You know, they have trailers and, you know, or some sort of RV that, it's just, you know, their preferred method of camping is to pull up next to a parking camp.
Mr. Urban.
As it relates to marijuana testing facilities, which are obviously different from dispensaries, I have a friend of mine that works at one, and he indicated that based on the method of testing, they have to bring in a large quantity of marijuana, but they only test a small portion of that, and then they dispose of the remainder, which causes their dumpster and other, you know, situations outside their property to become a magnet for thieves and whatnot. Is that, do you see that at all here or...
So we've seen it at all of our, at all of our dispensaries. That's why you see them all, you know, gated, and they're all under video surveillance. They're doing a much better job of, of breaking that down so it's not usable. So we, we don't see the issues that we saw, you know, when we first allowed those dispensaries in the city.
So is there a way for them to make it, or make it so it's not usable or some, is that the case? Or not just throwing it away, but making it, even if someone went and got into the trash, that there'd be no use for it? Does that...
There, there probably is. This police chief's not aware of it.
Okay.
I doubt for it.
Thank you.
Chief, I had a, I had a question. It's disturbing to see methamphetamines making a, a new entry or, or enhanced entry. We had a, and I'm concerned about because, because a number of years ago, we had a, had a house in our neighborhood that was a meth lab, and that can be very, you know, disruptive and, and dangerous. Are there, do you see, do you see meth labs happening in our communities? And if they are and where they are, is there a way to kind of, for citizens to understand that activity and to, to become more vigilant about that?
He always says that when I ask him. So, so we don't see the meth labs that we saw in the early to mid-two thousands, late nineteen-nineties. That's not the preferred way to, to make meth. The majority of methamphetamine right now that, that we see out in the streets is, comes from Mexico. It's cheaper to make down there. There is a cold fusion way of making it. They could make it in a Coke bottle now. It's not quite as, you know, from a chemical perspective, as hazardous as the old meth houses. But we see very little, very few of, of those. We just don't see a lot of it. A lot of the stuff that we're dealing, dealing with comes from Mexico.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions? Well, thank you, Chief. That was a good, good report. Appreciate you doing that.
And if, if you all have any questions later that you want to follow up on, please feel free to get ahold of Jim or I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
And we'll put that power, we'll put both PowerPoints on our webpage.
Thank you. Bless you. We will move to item number six. Is, is everybody all okay moving forward? Okay, good. We'll, we'll keep, we'll keep pressing on here. We don't have too much more business. Item number six, exemption from SB oh-five dash one fifty-two broadband. Mr. Goff, do you want to run us through this one?
Yeah, I put just together a brief memo on this. Mr. Fitzgerald asked for this to come forward. This is an interest to him. In two thousand and five, the General, Colorado General Assembly enacted Senate Bill oh-five-one-five-two, which prohibits local governments from providing cable service, basically providing cable service in, in different forms and, and definitions. Cities, local governments can opt out of that by asking their voters that question. Numerous communities have done that. Quite a few, actually. I think the count, as of this year, is ninety-two towns and cities have opted out, and numerous counties. I think I had seventeen in my memo, but from this flyer that Tim handed out, I think it looks like there's twenty-five counties across the state have opted out of this provision. So, Mr. Fitzgerald, did you want to speak to this?
This, this is an old, I think this is a year old, this map. And there, there are a few newspaper articles in the back, and I, I literally have tens of those articles. The original bill was cosponsored, cosponsored by Sherri John, our, our senator. And I talked to Sherri today, and she's, she said that it is time to get rid of this law, but we can't do that. So what we can do, however, is relieve ourselves of the burden of the law. And it'll cost us absolutely nothing. We don't have to do anything. It just gives us the option in the future. Now, if you look at the ballot questions that Patrick found for us, every single one of them passed. The one that didn't pass is slightly different because it asks for action. So I, I think this is a, a total win for us. It gives us the option, but it doesn't cause us to do anything, doesn't cost us anything. One thing it does give us is a little bit of leverage against the companies that provide, provide broad, broadband service. There's also something I'd like you to think about. When this bill was originally passed in the Colorado Senate and House, ask yourself the question, who benefits from that law? And I think, you know, I think you'll come to the same conclusion I've, I've come to. If you've read any of these ballot questions, I just wanted to say that there, there are basically are two types of way of stating this. The one I like is, for example, best exemplified by the one from the Town of Lyons, which is on page two of this. And that is, shall the Town of Lyons, without increasing taxes by this measure, and to restore local authority that was denied to local government by the Colorado General Assembly and foster more competitive marketplace, be authorized to provide high-speed internet, including, and I've taken some words out, new technologies, telecommunications services and/or cable television services to residents, businesses, schools, libraries, nonprofit entities, and other users of such services, either directly or indirectly, with public se, or private sector partners, as expressly permitted by Article twenty-seven, Title twenty-nine in the Colorado Vice statutes. And one thing I'd like to say about that is our neighbors have all passed this, have all relieved themselves of this burden. Arvada and Golden as examples. And I believe there's an opportunity for us to partner with, at, at some future date with other cities in the area. There's nothing concrete movement right now. And I, I don't foresee us actually spending any money on this or doing anything in the immediate future. But I just, we ought to give ourselves the chance to think about this.
Thank you. Mr. Ann.
I support doing this. My question is, looking at Arvada and Golden, they made sure to specify home rule because we are home rule, so should we look at that? Because Lyons doesn't state that, so I'm just thinking we should clarify that in there.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, would you want this to go to a special election this year or would we put it on the ballot for next year?
This year. Yeah, because we have time to do it if we take action.
Janelle, what would that look like? Doing a special election for this ballot initiative?
There, there would just be...
No, it wouldn't be this year.
We do the coordinated election, so we would just add a...
Question on the ballot.
A question.
So it would just be on the...
A ballot question.
Okay, so it wouldn't have to be like specific during, like our, every two years? Like for our election cycle?
No, 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 no.
It could go on the Colorado ballot?
When, when, when we do a ballot question in an off-year, like an even year like this one, there's motion or resolution to have a, it's called a special election. So for, from a city standpoint, this would be a special election, but we just put it on them with the county. It's coordinated election.
Okay.
So there's kind of...
I agree. I got you.
Two separate concepts going there, yeah.
Okay. So what would we, what would be our next steps then?
Well, our next steps, I think, probably are to wait because there are some new technologies coming down the line. But...
Well, I think she was talking about putting it on the ballot.
Oh, well, we, the next step would be, I would like to get a consensus tonight to ask our city attorney to drop an issue for us to consider during a council meeting.
We'd have to take it. The next date probably would be August thirteenth. It's due to the county, the first of September-ish, so it'd be by resolution. Yep, August thirteenth. We could, August twenty-seventh, I guess, too, would be the latest.
Mr. Matthews.
Is there a charge for us to put this on the ballot? I mean, about how much?
There is. It, it depends on how long it is. I'm thinking back to the, the two E thing. That was pretty long.
Yeah.
Do you think this one would be shorter?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, they're all fairly short. Yeah, it's not a taper question, so you don't have to have all the taper language in it, which kind of makes it long.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Maragus. As it relates to our current franchise agreement with Comcast that goes through twenty-twenty-five, so if we were to pass this, we would have to wait out that contract? Or would we be able to, at some point in the future, terminate that contract prior to that twenty-twenty-five date?
Contract doesn't give them sole right to provide cable service, so we, we could have additional contract with a different company at the same time. Yeah.
And then, in reading through that franchisee agreement, there's to be some kind of annual report to us relative to complaints or service outages or other sort of issues with that franchise agreement. Do we have any kind of, any report from them?
They do send us on occasion, I think it's a regular basis, I think monthly. Heather Geier tracks those. We don't necessarily bring them to council, but we get a report that if they've had a complaint, an outage or such. But yeah, it's very, it's not very many. It's something we, we can report out to if you want, but...
Sure.
But they do respond. They do send us that information.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Matthews.
I wouldn't have any objection for us doing, taking steps, provided the cost is not excessive to keep our options open. But I just have no idea how we would actually follow through in some, at some future date. But if, if it's a couple thousand dollars or something for us to get on the ballot, I'd have no objections to us having the opportunity in advance of keeping our options open.
Mr. Pod. So, Mr. Urban.
I guess one other sort of broad question is how many residents within our community use the internet? That, that sounds kind of like a foolish question to, to most of us, but there is a significant portion of our residents that just simply aren't online on a regular basis. So I think this might help encourage folks to get online, but I, you know, just looking at it from a ballot perspective, trying to understand, you know, what percentage of the voting public is going to be on, you know, on board with this, so.
There are, don't forget, we have businesses also, like Lutheran Hospital, for example.
Sure.
And this was really a question to, to entitle us to be able to, to make those, you know, inquiries and, and develop a business plan. Ms. Shaver.
Well, I wanted to say about the cost.
Well, I wanted to say about the cost. Off the top of my head, I can't say. My guess, my, just pulling it out of thin air, my guess would be somewhere around $5,000. But, I can do some figuring tomorrow and get you, maybe a closer number. It, it has to do with how much space it takes on the ballot.
I'm saying, I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend any of your time until you see what we're actually looking at.
Yeah, that's, that's true, too.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'd like to ask for a consensus that we ask Mr. Dahl to bring us a ballot question on this subject.
Okay, we have consensus on that. Thank you. And perhaps Ms. Shaver would see...
You'll know, this will be a ballot question. If it's money, it's an issue. If it's not money, it's a question.
You learn something every day.
There is a difference. And, and you can get in trouble for saying it wrong.
Well, consider yourself in trouble. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. That concludes the agenda items that we have. Staff reports, Mr. Goff?
Yeah, real, real quickly, just a couple items. I emailed you at the beginning of the week. We had, we've received a couple requests for a couple different items. One was the Together Colorado proposal to RTD to provide a, a creation of a youth pass that has a 70% discount for youth ages 13 to 19, provides free transit for youth 12 years of age and younger, if they're accompanied by a fare-paying rider, and then the creation of a low-income program. This is a proposal that is in front of the RTD board right now, and they are asking for letters of support. There was a sample resolution that I put in your email also. Is that something council would like to consider?
Do we see consensus on that? Please proceed.
Okay. The other one is Jefferson County School District has reached out, and they would like to potentially have a joint dinner meeting or a joint coffee hour with city council. You guys meet on different nights that they do, so I guess the question is, if, if we can't find a study session evening on a Tuesday, or a Monday evening, would anybody be willing to meet with them on a Wednesday or a Thursday, either for, like, a coffee or a dinner on a different day? We're just trying to get a gauge if you would meet on a reg, a non-study session evening, or should we push for a study session evening if you, if you want to meet with them? Yes, George, I'm sorry, George.
Mr. Goff?
I may have missed this in the, in the email request, but is there, wherever we do it, does it have to be, it's a public meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I'm willing to do it on another night, obviously, as long as we can kind of make sure that it all works for us, and, and that it's a reasonable, that we can make reasonable accommodations to make it accessible.
Ms. Dozeman? Do we have consensus on that, on that, to see if we can schedule something?
Any date that works, that we can make work for both boards? Okay.
That sounds, that sounds good.
Okay, let's all have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number eight is elected officials' reports. I will just look for hands. Does anyone have anything for tonight? Then, we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.